So I've got it as seven P M. I'm aware that Theo Noel is not going to be attending tonight. So I think we have all the members of planning board that we'd be expecting. So with that being said, I'd like to call this. January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board to order. I'll do attendance, uh, Matt Lowry. Bill Spalding. And Kevin York. And myself as well. So we'd like to move over to the second order on the agenda, the approval of the meeting minutes. For January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Do I have other members of the planning board have a chance to review and or have any comments?
I've got no comments and I'll make a motion to prove the minutes as presented.
So motion by Matt, seconded by Bill, Kevin York. Bill Spalding. And Matt Lowry. And myself is a yes. So the meeting minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty five are approved four to nothing. Moving over to item number three, which is the. Uh, one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision. Meeting, a public meeting rather. So we received the board, uh, reached out to the applicant proactively and. Were got feedback that the applicant uh was not going to be ready. For additional informations for the board to consider and. A letter was issued to this board um stating the following. Dear Mister Chair, uh, as anticipated, I respectfully request that the planning board. Continue this matter currently scheduled for its meeting on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five to its meeting schedule for February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. The reason for the continuance request is that we are in the process revising the attached dwelling aspect of development. With the Board of Appeals and would like to get further along with that process before moving forward with the planning board. Lastly, the planning, as the planning board is aware. We have already extended the time for the planning board to render decision on this matter until April eleventh, twenty twenty five. And will remain open to further extensions as warranted. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation and we would forward to seeing you regarding this matter at your meeting on the fifth, twenty fifth of February, twenty twenty five. So with that being said, uh. We had a, uh, had a note on our. Meeting minutes, uh, is essentially denoting that we were anticipated a vote for this body to. Continue the public hearing until that February twenty eighth, sorry, February twenty fifth date. So I'm, uh, open up to any comments from other members of the board at this time.
Um, I'll make a motion to move the. Or continue the public hearing till uh February twenty fifth at seven o'clock.
Uh, so motion by Matt to continue the one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision to our. February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting, uh, so roll call vote, Kevin. Bill? Matt? And myself, yes. So that continuance is approved by the board uh four to nothing. So I believe that uh closes item number three. And I'll move on to item number four, the A D U zoning amendment. I'll turn it over to uh Sam to provide an update. I know that there was a revised draft that was being worked on. And maybe Sam, you can uh start by kind of outlining to the board the timeline in order to get this to town meeting.
Sure. I printed it out, want to make sure I'm reading all the dates correctly. Okay, um, so. The. Planning Board needs to submit the draft to the Town Council. For their initial consideration. They will then refer it back to the planning board. Planning Board can have that. Um, a, a general meeting to discuss kind of ins and outs, make any more amendments that you would like to see. And then we need to hold a formal public hearing, just like we did for M B T A communities. It has to be publicly noticed for. The fourteen days prior to the hearing, so like fifteen days before your hearing at a minimum. Um, and that can technically happen all the way up to the, the right before a town meeting. Um, but we'd like to try to do it, obviously not that close. Um, so I'm anticipating that would be March fourth or eleventh. Um, then there would be an information session which would be held in March uh between the third and the thirteenth. We'll have to check everybody's schedules as well as um I'll have to find a location for us to be able to have that. Um, as that would be a hybrid meeting likely at the Public Safety Building, um, where most public uh hybrid meetings are held. Then we'll need to submit a final version to Town Council, which would need to be uh on March twentieth. The Springtown Meeting warrant is finalized on March twenty fourth. Um, so we need to, like I said, submit it uh by the twentieth uh to be able to get on their agenda. And then Springtown Meeting would be around the fifth uh and likely will be a multi-day town meeting. So as of right now, that is the timeline. Um, and then I can go over the draft and point out some big changes and and part of. Why uh we have a draft if you'd like, or an amended draft.
Yeah, I, I think it would make sense. I know we, we spent a decent amount of time going through it last time, so I'd like to go through the. Uh revised draft and point out any uh major changes, get any feedback and then. Um, the board can, can elect to take action or not on the amendment.
Sure. So the last iteration um that you had reviewed at the previous meeting, I took in all of your comments. I uh updated the draft. I got feedback from the department heads who had been involved. Um, with, you know, public works, town engineer, building, um, uh, public safety departments, um. And a handful of others trying to make sure that we're addressing everybody's concerns as much as we can through this legislation. Um, there's still. Plenty of administrative stuff we're gonna have to figure out as well. Um, but, and then I had an opportunity to also talk to Town Council. Uh, Tom Mullen about the uh draft and we also got updated. Final regulations from the state, which had a few additional things that we needed to include. So I went through everything with him, um, and everybody else. Some of the big changes here, um.
Sam, does it make the, do we want to pull up the, the revised draft or is that necessary?
Um, I can't, I don't really think it's necessary because they're not, there's not a ton of changes, um. From what we had discussed previously, I, I can just call out, there's really only about three or four big changes. Um, and most of them are things that we were directed to do by the state. The latest state iteration. Um, so just as a side note, we had kind of gone back and forth about or at the previous meeting, the board had gone back and forth about. Um, the potential of some sort of administrative review process or doing um like a. The A D U review matrix, and while that may be an in-house document, which is effectively just a checklist, um, we cannot codify it because it creates. A fuzzy area as to whether or not there are things included on the matrix that are not included in the regulation. So we had to strike that. Um, the. State uh allows for a special permit. If the A D U is located in a floodplain or an aquifer protection overlay district. So we went ahead and added that to ours. Um, so that it will have uh additional layers of review and not be allowed by right. We, uh, the. In the under procedural, um, the, as we struck the section on the A D U matrix, um, any. A D U that requires off-street parking. Uh, have a subject or are subject to the site plan review. That was amended. Uh, the short-term rental was defined consistent with the state. And then most of the others were amendments that were um just more typos or other things that you had asked. The only other big uh change was two setbacks. So the state has a mandate that you can't have anything more restrictive than what the underlying zoning would be. For a single-family structure, um. And then they added a caveat that if the lot is less than ten thousand square feet. Um, which is roughly about three tenths of an acre, I mean, a third of an acre. Um, that the A D U, whether it's attached or detached, they have not specified. This beyond just any A D U constructed. So we're saying attached or detached would have a minimum setback of no less than five feet. On site and rear. We don't have any, we, we have no, this, this state is mandating this, um, to try to make it. Possible for these smaller lots. It's called their, I believe it's like their small lot clause. I forgot the exact terminology. Um, so that was one big change because we had ten feet in there previously. Um, and so this has then shifted now down to five feet. If it's under ten thousand square feet. All other lots still have the ten-foot setback. Or whatever, we have to again have that caveat of, or whatever the underlying zoning is, whichever is less. We cannot be more restrictive than a single family. So, um, if for some reason that particular area has a five-foot setback and we have a ten, we have ten feet on here. And that's a, a larger lot, we have to bump it down. Does that make sense?
It does. Um, remind me, um, in the procedural requirements. They were saying that site plan review is required for uh. A D U's that require off-street parking. Do we specifically indicate which body that site plan review would be routed to?
Um, I don't think I wrote that in here. Um, it goes to. The Z B A is, um, I believe is how everything has been set up. Um, but no, I will go ahead and add that. Thank you for, for bringing my attention to that. Um, the other thing I want to make you aware of is the definition that the state has for. A transit station when we're talking about the parking requirements. Um, they include a bus station, but their definition is of a bus station is technically a bus stop. So if, so I had to, so that I just pulled all of the language for the parking section um from the state because they updated it slightly. And it now includes. A bus station, which is the, the definition, I mean, is, is being included in the A D U bylaw as proposed. Um, with any point, any location serving as a point of embarkation for any bus operated by a transit authority. So I just want to give you a heads up that this is not just for the commuter rail. It will also be for any bus stop.
Well, Sam, thanks for addressing that because that was my first question about the whole bus station, bus stop. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and.
The other thing I wanted to ask, just from a, a applicability perspective, is this A D U bylaw. When I read it, it wasn't clear to me, but is this applicable to only our. Um, special, single-family residential and single-family residential? Or is this also applicable to our general residential and or business districts?
Anywhere, it's, it's explicit in here. Um, it talks about a single-family residential zoning district. The definition is on that last page. Any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are permitted. Or an allowable use, including any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are allowed as a right. By special permit, variance, waiver, or other zoning relief or discretionary zoning approval. So it includes S S R, S R, G R. I think M R, neighborhood business and business. And it has to be attached to a principal dwelling. So it doesn't mean like a business. Building, like a, I don't know, let's say like an auto chef garage that exists can have an A D U. It has to be attached to a principal dwelling. It's an accessory use only for a principal dwelling.
And sorry, where, where's that spelled out? I apologize if I missed it, but.
Sure, where is what spelled out?
The applicability of where you could put an A D U in, with those zoning districts that you just referenced.
So under, it's not, we don't spell it out in the zoning districts because that may change at some point in time. So we're not going to call out those specific ones. Um, what it does say under use, uh, three, which is number three, use and dimensional requirements, A. One A D U shall be permitted per lot in a single-family residential zoning district. This provision is not subject, isn't, shall not be subject to a variance or special permit, meaning they can't have. An additional special permit to have an additional unit.
The, the reason I ask is because when I read that, that looks to me. And maybe, maybe it shouldn't, that reads to me as if it's only S S R and S R.
So there's a definition on the definition page, on the very last page of the A D U, it shows, and I can, what I'll do. Is I can capitalize it. This is what, um, part of what I went through with. Mullen, Mister Mullen, um, to discuss if there's something specific, like the single-family residential zoning district. Then all of those need to be capitalized so that somebody refers back to the definition. And they recognize that that is a very specific called-out thing. It is not a generic thing.
Oh, okay. So there's, there's that, that single-family residential zoning district.
It's defined by the state. Which is the definition that we're pulling into our bylaw. Um, and then. Uh, it, it is. But like I said, I'm sorry, um, it needs to be capitalized to be able to call that out explicitly as. The single family. Um, but it, it also says, um, an A D U that conforms to the requirements. Shep contained herein shall be permitted as a right as an accessory use to a principal dwelling and principal dwelling is capitalized. So if you wanted to, the other, I can, your question kind of had two parts. Um, if you want it to explicitly state. That this is, this has to be attached to a principal dwelling as defined herein. Um, we can do that. Because it's not entirely, it's, it's, it's in there, it's just not explicitly spelled out, which is fine.
I, I would almost rather just, and, and other members of the board can feel free to disagree and voice it, but. I'd almost rather take some of that language associated with single-family residential zoning district and bring it into the body. Of the. Um, the body of the balance, you, you know, not put it as a definition at the back, but take, you know, one A D U shall be permitted. Per lot in a single-family zoning district and then just can. Yeah, and um, use and dimensional requirements, three A, and just take some of the language from the definition and just. Put it up there, just as it's all in one location, because I feel like otherwise it's kind of becomes a hunt and peck exercise. Of who can discern capital letters or not, um, just from a ease of. Reference for folks who aren't involved in the, the, the development of this in the future.
I agree. I think that makes sense to put it actually in. In the text there.
Yeah, I, I would also agree. Yeah, I might feel different if we were using single-family residential zoning district in other places in the bylaws, but since this is a very.
New term.
And very specific term.
On that s- second part of the question, Sam, where you said it's. Sort of mentioned, but not explicitly that the A D U has to be attached to. The single-family residence, where, where is that currently?
It's two A.
But you're saying it's, it's. It's an accessory to the prince, to a principal dwelling. So that's what's being attached, but it's not being attached physically. You're just.
Correct, right. In, in order for you to have an A D U, you have to have a principal dwelling. No principal dwelling, no A D U. Even if the underlying zoning permits it because it's the single-family residential zoning district as, you know, explicitly. Laid out herein.
And to your point, that's what that's doing is preventing other non-residential uses such as a garage or a, a business. From having an A D U on the same lot. I, I, I think that makes a lot of sense unless other members of the board care to chime in, but I don't think it makes sense to have a. You know, a, a bank and with an A D U, for example.
Oh, that's, I mean, that's not, it's not an option, if that makes sense, under the state law.
Oh, I see. What were you saying was the decision that we would have to make as a board to detach it?
Just to, well, I mean, as, as the board, you have to make a decision whether or not you want it spelled out explicitly within the document. Do you want it included under procedure requirements or under use more explicitly that one A D U shall be permitted by right. A, you know, I, I don't, um, I can talk to Tom exactly on how to phrase that because I want to make sure I'm not stumbling over things. But that you, in order to have essentially some sort of clause stating, um, that in order to have. An A D U, you have to have the principal dwelling.
Yeah, I think saying the attached to is a little confusing. It seems like it needs to literally be.
It doesn't say attached to.
I, I know, but you keep. I know it doesn't say that, but we've just been discussing that attached to.
In conjunction with.
Yeah, it's just, just so we're.
And I, and through the chair, I will make sure, as I noted to earlier, to, um, to speak with Mister Mullen about the exact language on how to phrase that.
Yeah, I, I, I think the way it reads right now, it, it says verbatim. An A D U that conforms to the requirements contained herein shall be permitted as of right as an accessory use to a principal dwelling. Unless there's a legal reason why that language doesn't work. I think it's, that's pretty clear. Or unless you're saying that, because it's basically, because it's by saying it's shall be permitted as a right as an accessory use to a principal dwelling. That's making the accessory use to the principal dwelling as a requirement.
It is, but I didn't know if you wanted it spelled out differently than that.
Matt and Kevin, do either one of you have a reaction to, to that language and have any edits that you would? Want to see?
Well, again, saying it's an accessory use. We're not implying that it has to be as, either a separate building or anything, right? Because usually an accessory.
A home, a, a home occupation is considered, through the chair, my apologies, um, a home occupation is considered an accessory use as well. That was a craft studio or something and, and it explicitly states it can be either like in a separate structure, like a shed or above a garage. Or within the principal dwelling, um, in some variation in our zoning, zoning code currently, so. I mean, that, that's the language. And again, um, when I did go over this with Mister Mullen, he felt okay about that, but. Just again, I, I want to make sure if there's anything you want me to add, I can do it before it gets forwarded to Town Council.
I, I think it's okay as this.
Any other, any other uh clauses you wanted to highlight or input you wanted from the board?
Um, no, I, uh, just. At this point, I think, um, would request that some guidance on whether you'd like to forward it to Town Council. To begin conversations for having it on the warrant for Springtown meeting.
I would suggest that we have a public forum or something and get input from. Anyone who wants to speak in this before.
We don't have the time through the chair. Um, in order to be, in, in order to, it, it has to be in, in February. I mean, I, I guess if, if you have. I can look into that. That's not what I was advised. Um, so just again, let me know what you would like me to do and I can check, but I. The problem is if that's not the or, that, that was not the order that was given to me of how it needs to go through the process. Um, because it can't even be potentially considered for town meeting until Town Council reviews it. Um, so this was the order I was given in order for it to be able to be moving forward.
At our next meeting, we, we couldn't have just a, a, a forum and say anyone wants to speak, they're, they're allowed to?
Well, you need to have a formal, go ahead.
So I think, because we can, we could refer to the Town Council. The next Town Council meeting is on the tenth, right? And when, after they refer it back to us, then we would, then it, then it becomes incumbent upon us to have a public hearing. But we can still make amendments to the, to it at that time. So we could theoretically have a public forum on the eleventh. You know, the day after the Town Council and then have a formal public hearing. The, what is it, like the, uh, March, would be March eleventh?
Well, I have the, the timeline I had kind, I had outlined, um, was that the public hearing, the formal public hearing that requires the fourteen day notice. Would be March fourth or eleventh. And then there would be a public information session. So a forum or whatever it is that you want to call it, so that there's some back and forth conversation with the public and engagement. Um, sometime between March third and thirteenth. It can of course be sooner than that. Um, I just anticipated that you may want to have it after the public hearing so that if there are any additional comments. Those could be potentially worked into a draft before you're having an information session slash forum. Um, a final copy has to be submitted by March twentieth with no additional edits to Town Council. So we have to be able to have enough time, I need enough time, to review any changes. After a public hearing, after an information session, to be able to get this to turn around. And be submitted to Town Council for their March twentieth deadline.
It's, to, to me, it sounds like this process is, is way too rushed without any input from anyone else. And I feel really uncomfortable about that. Um, I would really want to have some input from, from people. Before it gets referred to Town Council because. Any amendments will have to be floor changes on the, at, at town meeting, correct?
No, the final version of the A D U bylaw. Will be submitted March twentieth. So between now and March twentieth, you can make as many edits as you want. The only reason it has to go to Town Council now is that they have to refer it back to Planning Board in order to have that public hearing. We can't hold any public hearings until it gets referred back to Planning Board by Town Council.
All right, I'm not talking a public hearing. I'm just talking a forum where we, we say anyone wants to talk about it. We're having this at our meeting. We're still working on it. Anyone who wants to discuss it, we're happy to do that before it gets sent on.
Okay, and it has been, just so you know, it's been included on the agenda for the last two. Iterations, so people have had the opportunity to, they could be here now to have the comments. Um, as a side note, I'm, I'm concerned about shifting the timeline and not being able to meet. These deadlines. Um, this is a, a big problem with. A, a big crunch with uh M B T A communities, um, because I have other stuff that's also going on simultaneously. And I will be dealing with some projects on the herd school ramping up probably around this time. So I'm trying to be cognizant to leave myself enough time. Otherwise it won't be getting done. And I think that would be a very unfortunate situation. Because people, it, come February second, they will be able to construct these without any of these regulations that we have. Period. There is a time where they will be allowed by right with no commentary by the town. Aside from our very standard zoning regulations. The only thing that this is doing is giving us the ability to have site plan review, really. There's no way for people to say no. That is one thing that, um, we do need to be cognizant of, is that this is going to happen whether the public wants it or not. Uh, unfortunately, because it is coming down from the state. And I know a lot of people aren't thrilled with that. Um, kind of course that this is taking, um, but I, I do want to make sure that we're not leaving too long of a window. Because we could end up in a situation where then there's nothing that's able to go to Sat- Springtown meeting. And there are no of these review components, so people could build one in a floodplain. Um, that there is no site plan review. There's no special permits for any of these that are in certain criteria. They can rent them out of short-term rentals, which was one of the number one concerns that the public had had, um, when they were talking about M B T A communities and this. Issue of the A D U's starting to come up. So, um, I would encourage us to stick to the timeline that I worked with. Town Council and the Town Administrator's Office on and not. Very, veer too much away from it.
Well, I, I'm concerned that we get to town meeting and this is summarily brought down because. It's been thrust upon people without much comment. So that is one of my concerns. Because we know there's going to be a certain segment that are going to say, I don't want anyone telling me what to do. And they're going to vote that way. So. I just don't want, and it's happened many times before, is this, this is thrown upon us, you're telling us we have to do this. You're telling us we have to do this or something bad's going to happen. There are a lot of people that do not get involved, unfortunately, except for town meeting and for saying no to everything. So that's my concern. I'm just putting that out there.
Is there anything preventing us in the meantime? So we have the draft. I'm not sure which version of the draft is on the planning board website right now. But through town communication channels, letting people know it's there and we're inviting people to review it. Even before town council CIL looks at it or it's referred back to us.
I mean, it's been up and available since the last meeting and it has been updated with every additional draft iteration that's come out because I had, I mean, you guys got inundated, my apologies, with different variations this last couple of weeks, um, or since the last meeting, but the, once the state regulations and then I met with Mullen. So it's been updated. If you were to go to the website, this is the, the one that says January 24th is the exact version that they are reviewing. Um, I mean, that the public is, is able to review. Um, there's, there's, you know, I, I've always encouraged public engagement. Um, I think the, the, again, the only concern I have is I just don't want us to get too far off of this timeline. Um, because there will be a donut hole of time where we're, we have no regulations. And so I want to make sure that my goal is to try to be able to meet the concerns of the town and other department heads as well as any concerns the planning board and the public may have. We can't address that without being heard. Otherwise it's not going to, it'll go to, um, to fall town meeting or a special meeting, which I don't know that that would happen.
Right. I, I'm thinking so that we could stick to the timeline, but also to Matt's point, try to steer off people saying, I, I didn't know about this. There wasn't enough notice. Proactively ask the town through their communication channels to start directing people to it. To say, here it is. We're going to be talking about it. There are going to be public hearings. There are going to be public, uh, informational sessions. So that again, people can't make that claim. Once it gets to town meeting that we didn't know about.
Um, and I'm happy to try to see if we can hold an information session or forum before the public hearing. Like, uh, again, in February, it's just that I don't have control. I, I feel very hesitant to commit to anything because I don't have control over what rooms we can get because there's really only one room we could utilize for this kind of.
But we can also, we can, we can hold a public forum via this body at our discretion, right? It doesn't have to be a form of public hearing.
Correct.
Theoretically, if we, if we routed the draft that we currently have right now in town council, town council is going to push it back to us. And that allows us to, to have a public hearing, but we could have a public forum at our next meeting without. And, and then we can make, it's up to our discretion because we can make those changes in advance of the public hearing, right?
You can make change.
As long as we make, uh, as long as once we have the public hearing, we have sent out the notice because the notice has to be tied to whatever is the draft document.
Right. And you can have an, I mean, you can have updated versions. It's the, but the, the bulk of it does need to have the public hearing. Um, it needs to be consistent with what was noticed at the public hearing. If there's a typo, that's not that big of a deal, but substantively, if there's something big changing, um, it, that needs to be included. There's not a lot of room from, by the state for, for municipalities to really have much regulation over this. So I, we, however, however, that's being presented to the public, we need to be cognizant of that, that there's just not that much regulation or discretionary zoning that can happen through this process. Um, so if, if you want to phrase it as a forum or an information session, just let me know. Um, I can work on putting, work with, um, our communications director on getting that information together. Um, if that is something that you do want to talk about at your next meeting or at a subsequent meeting, uh, just let me know so I can work on trying to get this together.
Um, Sam, are the state guidelines complete or are they still revising them?
They're finalized. This version has the finalized, the finalized EO HLC regulations. They are not called guidelines because guidelines are not something that you're required to follow. Regulations are, um, something that they dealt with, with MBTA communities three A. There are. They will be officially published. They're available online now and they say final and they're not changing. But they will be officially published by the secretary on February 2nd. I'm not really sure why there's a, a gap. Um, I think that's because that's the day that they become officially permitted. We have like seven people literally with permits just waiting at the counter. Um, so there's, there will be ones that fall through the hole. And we can't do anything to stop that. As long as they are compliant with that state version that's posted, um, and then meet whatever our underlying zoning is for accessory structures. Or additions or, you know, however they're approaching that.
So what I would propose that we consider doing is if we send these, because the only thing that correct me wrong, the only thing the town council is going to do is essentially refer it back to us, right?
They're not having any discussion as far as I've been told.
So if we refer, if we referred this zoning amendment to the town council for them to refer it back to us. And in the meantime, we held a pub, and because by the time we're going to have a public hearing, we're talking about like March, either the 4th or the 11th, I think probably 11th, because we actually have a meeting that day. But then we could, you know, regularly schedule a public, a planning board meeting. We could have a meeting on the, a, a public forum on the 11th, incorporate any changes and then create, you know, create the notice based on any changes from the fo- forum and then send out the notice on the 12th. And that'll give you plenty of time to have before March 11th. And then you have a formal public hearing at the, on the 11th.
Okay. So you're suggesting March 11th would be the formal public hearing and then two information sessions or just one?
A public forum on, uh, February 11th and, and we could, we could do another public forum on the 25th if, if, if prudent, but I would suggest that we do a public forum on the 11th at the regularly scheduled planning board meeting. And then based on the, the input or lack of, we could either do it on the 25th or not. And then we'd have a p- formal public hearing on March 11th. And that would give us the ability at that formal public hearing to the opportunity to refer it if the board deemed it appropriate in advance of that March 20th date that is required to be submitted to the town council.
Okay.
Jim, I just wanted to add the, the, uh, my computer froze there, so I had to wait for it to restart. Um, does, does that also include the, if I remember correctly, I was writing some notes, the March 13th to 15th public forum at the public safety building is, or is that part of the, the two sessions? So, or would they be at the public safety building?
So I, I think that's, that's an open question in my mind that we would need to decide as a group what we wanted to do.
I like the idea of the public forum, um, after attending the MBTA communities and having possibly representatives from town council as well as Mr. Mullen and Sam presenting and us present. I think that would be great. I mean, even if we had our regularly scheduled meeting, like just go through the motions of the first couple of items and then jump to the presentation. I would really like that. As well as a zoom. So it would be in-person.
Hybrid.
Hybrid zoom, yep.
For the, for the public hearing?
Well, if we have the opportunity to have two of those public hearings, but we have them hybrid at the public safety building and also run our regularly, regular scheduled planning board meeting. Is that worth it? I mean, I think it is. I, I always like having two, so people can't complain. Well, I wasn't able to make that one. Of course, it's a video too, recorded, but.
Just a quick thing, not to throw a wrench in anything, although I am going to throw a little bit of one. Um, we technically don't have to have the fa- formal public hearing, as weird as this sounds, until right, it has to be right before spring town meeting, but it can literally be the same day, just hours before. So if you wanted to, I mean, there is still a deadline to submit the final draft on March 20th. That's not going to change. Um, but there is room for potentially shifting that public hearing date around slightly. Or again, you can always have a special meeting, um, if need be, not to complicate things.
No, but I think it is good to have, I don't know what's on the agenda coming up for our March meetings. But if, yeah, so if they are that light, why not have it during our regular meeting?
Yeah, that was where my head was going. So having a formal public hearing, uh, at least one of the ones in March. And then the question is whether or not you take our regularly scheduled meeting and you make it hybrid.
I like that idea.
So, um, I just want to make sure I have the dates correct. Just can, if you, as a group, can confirm which dates you want me to look into the ability to do what, um, meaning which one do you want me to do the public hearing? Did you want the public hearing to be a hybrid as well as an inform, as well as the information session or just the information session as hybrid?
So what I'd like to propose and, and I'd like feedback from other members of the planning board is I'd like to propose at our, I'd like to propose referring this matter to the town council tonight. They will take it up and refer it back to us on Monday, February 10th. Monday, February 11th, I would propose we have a public forum as part of our regularly scheduled planning board meeting. Then I would pose, we would, after that public forum, if there's any changes that we elect to make as part of that process, we include that in a notice that would be sometime the rest, near the balance of that week. Uh, with the intent of getting that notice out so we could do a hybrid formal public hearing on March 11th as part of our normally scheduled planning board meeting. And then the question in my mind would be, would we want another one either March 18th? Or on March 18th, such that we could have the ability to make any changes prior to that March 20th date. But that would be what I'd propose is the 11th, we have a public forum, we provide notice and then we have a public hearing, March 11th, March 18th, question mark.
Well, the, again, the, the public hearing, the formal public hearing where we have to then refer it to at, at town meeting, that's basically for the most part, set what's going to go without floor changes, which are always difficult. So I don't think we need to have two hybrid meetings for that. We should, our, our last public hearing, it should be a formality at that point. So I, I don't see us needing the redundancy of a hybrid for that.
Matt, do you still feel we need to schedule two meetings?
Yeah, I think.
Besides the information.
We should have a, a forum where people can, can speak on this, ask questions, uh, do some education. Um, I know the town can send out a, a, uh, you know, an email or a text blast saying this is coming up. It's important that, you know, this is a, something that is being imposed on us and we're trying to get feedback on some regulations to protect the town.
Agreed. Okay.
So in that case, would I, uh, would it make sense to make it so the February 11th? So our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting would be hybrid meeting dedicated, right now, the only other thing on the agenda is related to the rules and regulations, but we could push that if need be and make that meeting solely focus on the ADU bylaw, public forum, hybrid.
Would you tell me?
I, I'm a little, again, going straight, straight to a hybrid meeting at the first time that a lot of people, I understand it's in our, it's been in our agenda, but as we can see, there's been absolutely no uh, input from anyone. And I'm just afraid that people aren't paying attention to this. So at least at our next meeting, we put it out there that we can discuss it. Maybe the, after that, we have a hybrid meeting. Once we get some initial input from the public. Specifically requesting input from the public.
So, a public forum at our next meeting, February 11th, and then March 11th, having a hybrid public forum with then a public hearing on the 18th. Well, I don't know if you can do that because you would have to notice that any potential changes two weeks prior, right? To the public meeting?
Correct. I mean, you don't have to have the final public hearing prior to submitting it to town council technically. You can submit the final copy before March 20th and then you can have your, you can have the formal public hearing at your March 25th meeting. It's just, there's no, aside from floor amendments, there's no room for amendments. There's no room for change. I mean, and there's really not to, to be, you know, honest, as I've mentioned before, there's really not that much room for change in this iteration of the bylaw either. Um, so I don't know, um, I know that I, there's concern with how the public will feel about that. Unfortunately, you know, our hands are kind of tied with some of the stuff with the state, but, um, just to kind of give you another option, that is something that you could look at doing if you wanted to.
I would push to have our formal public hearing, the one that has to be noticed two weeks in advance as close to town meeting as possible. It's a formality at that point that we approve what, what has had some public input before then. And then we, when we go to town meeting, the formality of, of recommending or not recommending it is, is set.
So in that case, virtual public forum, February 11th, hybrid public forum, March 11th. And with a finalized prior to the March 20th date with a warrant and then public hearing sometime in April, maybe April 8th.
Yes.
Could also do March 25th. You have a, you have a standing meeting on March 25th, which is right after the town meeting. There's March 25th or.
I'm just thinking that if you have, if you have, if you have the meeting on the, a, a public forum on the 11th, you want to make sure you have a, a notice. That has, has it. So if you have the eighth, you have plenty of times because otherwise you need to, to basically provide that notice the same day as you're having the public forum to get the two weeks.
Okay. So it sounds like February 11th is virtual, hybrid March 11th, nothing on the 25th. You just have your normal standing meeting and then a public hearing, the formal public hearing on April 8th?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So did I hear public hearing on the eleventh, March eleventh, and then another one on April eighth?
Uh, pu- uh hybrid, public forum.
Forum on March eleventh?
Forum on March eleventh, yep.
What do you want to call the discussion on February eleventh, then?
Public forum.
Okay.
So both of them are, you know, it's it's, uh it's the nomenclature we've been using for, you know, basically your info sessions. So, public forum at our regularly scheduled meeting on the February eleventh, and then March eleventh, we have another one, but hybrid, and then formal public hearing, April eighth.
So I I have a couple of questions on the site plan review. What, um, what kind of plan is this that needs to be prepared, is are there? What what's the criteria, what what needs to be shown on this?
Um, it would depend on what it is that's going on, um, it says right here. That, uh, they need to submit a site plan, floor plans and elevations. For B, for the billing permit, um. Uh, the site plan review request was by another department. For parking, um, so if you wanna give some additional guidance on what you think it should include, please feel free to do so, it was just at the request of. Another department.
Well, i- is the site plan, a a sketch plan on a napkin, is it a survey? Is, does it need to show gray, I mean, there's, there's a lot of variation on what a site plan is. And I think it needs to be defined, um, does it need to be an accurate survey? Does it not? I think that needs to be stipulated there.
Not saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was um, a requirement for a site survey, plot plan.
Um, I mean, it says a site plan, it's not explicit on. A certified, the 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 terminology certified isn't down there, but it says a site plan. Again, it's, it, that's just the language that's on there, again, please do feel free to correct.
It might have been in one of the webinars then. Maybe we add it as a definition of what a site plan is, definitions add.
So there, it, under chapter one ninety, which is our zoning code, there is a specific explicit. List of what a site plan is. A site plan shall show at least the following, the location, boundaries and dimensions of each lot, two foot contours of the existing and proposed land structure. Wakefield sewage bay, sewer base is in parentheses, um. The location of existing and proposed structures, water courses, drainage, means of access, drainage and sewer disposal facilities. The area and location of existing and or proposed leaching fields, if any, site plan shall be at a suitable scale, prepared by a registered land surveyor. Or registered professional civil engineer, in addition to the above information, the following information shall be provided, a chart showing all required dimensional requirements. In the district where the development is proposed and comparing them to the dimensional, the du- sorry, the dimensions being proposed. Drainage calculations for all runoff within the site, map showing existing and proposed two foot contours for sites which are relatively flat. One foot contours may be required, cross sections through the site may also be required, map showing all outdoor lighting, including the direction and intensity of such lighting.
All right, as long as that's referenced, then I don't think we'll have an issue.
Sam, I may suggest that that we just add the language, site plan as defined.
Yeah, I just wrote that down.
Because otherwise, people are gonna bring in anything and say, this is what I wanna do, so.
No, no problem, um, really quick question, um, through the chair to Matt, the, uh. Then if you're trying to be a little bit more explicit with that component, which is is great, um. What about to be, do you want to be a little bit more explicit on what we're calling a site plan here? Do you want that to also say as required, or whatever criteria in one twenty, or I'm sorry, one ninety twenty nine? As well?
Yeah, do we have a definition for floor plans in there also? Or is that, I mean, does it need to be done by an architect? Can it, can it be a piece of paper put in by the homeowner? And and this is just, I I've seen a lot of things get snuck in with a homeowner.
No, please, the, by all means, this is appreciated, um, I've seen plenty of things in my time too, um. So we can say, site plan to meet criteria in one ninety twenty nine, and then floor plans and elevations. By a registered architect, or is there anything else you wanna include?
Does that work? What do you think about that, Bill? You're you're an architect.
Right, I think it needs to follow the Massachusetts State. Architects regulate rules and regulations, so that would be if it triggers. For a certain requirements that it needs to be stamped.
Okay.
Yeah, something this size does not need to be stamped.
It does or does not?
Does not.
Okay.
But there could be a reason that it is required to be stamped in the mass rules and rights.
Okay, so you want me to check the state regulations, is that what you're saying?
No, I think you just need to cite in the definitions that the architectural. Plans, elevations. Um, should follow the Massachusetts Architectural Registration Rules and Regulations.
Okay. All right, a garage wouldn't be stamped, an entirely new, like an ADU with a garage?
That would trigger it, because a garage would trigger that, but a nine hundred square foot addition would not trigger that.
Okay.
It's a volume thing, it's kind of odd, um, this would allow interior designers that are professionals and licensed as NCIDQ. Could also, and very capable to do this, they would need an architect's stamp.
But if they're adding electrical plumbing, et cetera.
Yep, they would hire an electrical engineer, just like I do.
Okay.
Yep. Hire a structural engineer, just like I do, yeah.
Okay. Good to know, I will double check the language and spelling, this of my scribbles kind of messy. Um, and have that part added to for the floor plans and elevations. Component, okay.
Any other elements that members of the board has ever been reviewing this, have any questions, concerns or comments on? Uh, seeing none, so I guess we've talked conceptually about taking the the draft as. As amended by Sam and referring it to the town council, is that something that we would like to do as a board now?
I think so, if.
Yeah, I think we have, I I think we have to, we have to, uh, someone would have to make a motion to that effect, correct?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to refer the current. Accessory dwelling unit zoning amendment to the town council.
How about the, how about the draft, uh, amendment, just to to stipulate that it's not final?
Makes sense, draft amendment of the ADU zoning amendment.
Yes, Kevin, do you accept that friendly amendment from Matt to add the word draft to that motion? Okay, so we have a motion to accept the draft amendment as presented, um, do I hear second?
I'll second it.
So, uh, motion by Kevin, seconded by Matt, Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so we move to, uh, send this to the town council for their consideration. And with the anticipation that it will come back and we will set, we've set forth the February. Eleventh for a public forum virtually as part of our regularly scheduled meeting, as well as. A, the intent to have one on March eleventh in hi- hybrid, and then depending on how things go, tentatively. Putting April eighth as a public hearing date. So with that being said, uh, anything else anyone wants to say, before we move on to, if we close that item and move formally to the next item on our agenda? Okay, uh, seeing none, oh, sorry, go for it, Sam?
Through the chair, just one really quick thing, I wanna make sure, um, whenever we are looking to do the public, uh, the formal public hearing. That we need a vote, and I wanna make sure we have more than ample time, so it can't just be at that meeting prior to it, because I need to have. Effectively. Like three weeks in order to get that in and get it properly noticed, if that makes sense.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not following what your, the request is.
Um, I just wanna make sure that when, it's kind of, I guess, just housekeeping kind of things for. When you do the formal public hearing, there has to be a motion to make that, um, and it has to be voted on, that you're scheduling the formal public hearing, um. I believe, and also, I need to make sure that it's more than just the two weeks before, so it couldn't be at that. March twenty fifth meeting, we would need to do it at the March eleventh meeting, if you were confirming that April eighth date, so that I have enough time in order to notice it. Just wanna remind everybody.
The the intent would be at the March eleventh.
Okay.
Public forum, at the conclusion of that public forum, we would, um, we would potentially. Depending on the level of comment, we would potentially have a vote to to set it at the eighth. If not, then we may have to push it to the twen- you know, town Collins. So we'll, we'll have to figure that out as we get closer, that's why in pencil I'm putting the eighth. For the public hearing, but we may have to adjust it depending on the level of comments at the two public forums.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna be cognizant of needing to have fourteen, technically it's fifteen days before the public hearing to meet proper notice requirements. Um, and I also still need time to contact the paper and go back and forth with them, so that I need to have that that notice, so, all right, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so theoretically, for not, if if the, if the level of, uh, level of engagement. Uh, does not warrant wholesale changes, and theoretically we should be able to do it at the eleventh, but if not, then we might have to push that public hearing back. So we could do it at the twenty fifth. So, okay, well, with that being said, uh, I will close that item and move on to item number five on our agenda, planner update, so. Sam, you don't get much of a reprieve on this one.
Hello again, um, I don't really have very much to update right now, there's a couple of different thing, projects I'm working on, um. Obviously, you know about the ADU bylaw, uh, the affordable, uh, no, the, um. Housing production plan, that deals with affordable housing, is underway, the housing needs assessment. Um, is in draft form, and they're hoping to come present, oh my gosh, I don't know where my notes are, they're hoping to come present at one of the upcoming meetings. Um, Theo had mentioned this in one of his emails, Jim. Let me make sure I have the date, I think it's the eleventh, that they're hoping to.
Sam?
Yes.
Sold me February twenty fifth.
Okay, is that what he said, I have, that, that's fine, if that's what you were in, if that's what we talked about. Yes.
Yeah, February, February twenty fifth meeting.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah, so they're looking to come in, um, and present at the upcoming meeting on. Oh, actually, no, I have, here I have the the eighteenth, is that, is that even a meeting date, two eighteen?
It is not.
Okay, so it'll be February, I'll have to to reach out to confirm with the consultant then, um.
Uh, in terms of a timing, we have, the twenty fifth will work, we have the one in the next update on the one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street. So I'm sure that will drive some attendance, uh, so that would be a good time for them to come.
Okay, um, and if, for some reason, if it, if they were hoping to get in on February eleventh, would that be ex- an acceptable option as well?
Uh, I would say yes, the only, so we've got the, uh, a rules and regulations update, and we've got the public forum on the ADU bylaw, so. I think that probably would work as well.
Okay, if if need be, I will reach out to them to confirm, um. When they would like to come, I can't, okay, I know, so in my notes. In my, Theo had it differently, um, in my notes, and I just grabbed the email, um, they are hoping to come on February eleventh, yes.
On the eleventh, okay.
Yes, to do their progress report and let you know where they are in the process, um, but they are progressing along, still anticipate being done with it, um, in May. So that we can have everything submitted to the state for the grant, and then also submit to have our. Housing production plan be approved and accepted by UHLC.
So they come, would they want to be the first item on the, I'm trying to think, because we've got the public forum for the ADU bylaw. So probably do the production plan update, and then the the public forum for the bylaw.
Yeah, I would anticipate, he, he's been very respectful of the committee members, um. For the Housing Production Plans Advisory Committee at their time, so we keep most meetings only to an hour, um, so if you have a time that you want, like a. You wanna give him fifteen minutes or twenty minutes or whatever, I can let him know and pass that along and see if that's. Just to be cogni- and and respectful of everyone's time, can, because we're likely to have, um, a lot of discussion or poten- the potential for it at least, um. Just let me know.
Yeah, I would want, I would advocate that we keep that, keep his his presentation to between twenty and thirty minutes, and then that would allow us to have a little bit of time, and then. We can have the public forum afterwards for the, uh, the eighty.
Okay, um, those are, that's just my big, the big two things I'm working on, um, along with some other affordable housing project stuff. But, um, I don't have any news on that to share yet.
Okay, uh, in that case, any, uh, I guess, uh, so Sam, you just said that nothing else from the planner update. So I'll close that item, move on to the next item on the agenda for items not anticipated by the chair, any members of the planning board have any items that they wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I was just curious, did that letter actually go out to, um, the Han Street property, or?
Um, I have put stuff in the mail, um, but I have not heard back anything yet, heard anything back yet.
This, um, follow up question on that, Matt, have we sent those in the past as a registered letter, or did we write it up and then send the email? I, I kind of remember just doing the email side of it, not like a mailed letter.
Well, usually the the ones that we've had issues with, we we have known. Some of the players involved, and we can contact them, so in this case. Um, the original attorney who was working on it apparently is out of the picture, and. Um, it's just the developers slash new owner who's working on this, so.
I have their email address.
You do have it?
I do, but the, part of the reason why we were doing a paper copy is because they're not following up.
Okay, so it it's been emailed to them, they just never responded.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, thank you for explaining, yep, that makes sense.
At at some point, um, they've got to work on the roadway, and it has to be building inspections, has any of this been brought to their attention when they're out there? Do you know?
I do not know, um, you'd have to check in with the the building inspector and see what he, any conversations he's had with them on it.
Okay.
Okay, um, well, I did have one item, uh, that I wanted to follow up, and Kevin, has the bylaw review committee met again? Since the last time that we had a meeting with them?
We. We had a joint. We had a joint meeting with Z B A and that same night there was a, a presentation to town council. We have not met since then, we are on the books for next Monday for our next meeting. Um, and I anticipate we'll talk timeline more at that one, uh, Z B A expressed. Quite a bit of hesitancy at presenting this at Springtown meeting, so I think that's something we need to discuss, they want. More time to go into it and want us to aim for fall.
Um, the reason I ask is because I'd like to get, and maybe you can add this to the file review committee. To discuss, but I'd like to understand that they intend to pick up the signage overlay, because I know that's a major point of focus. And so if that's something that the bylaw review committee intends to pick up, then great, and if it's not, then I would like to start the process here. And getting our group focused on it, but I don't want to have duplicative efforts. So, um, if you could get a line of sight on what their intent is on that item, uh, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we heard during the joint meeting with the Z B A that there apparently was language drafted. By, I believe it was a former member of the Z B A who no longer lives in town. Around signage, it just never went anywhere, so that was being, do you know anything about that, Sam?
Yeah, so there was, I, I believe I do, um, there was a group that was working on a rewrite and an update. There were a number of meetings, there's meeting minutes and everything to go back through for the group that was working on this signage. Overlay by law rewrite. Um, and that was actually where I pulled most of the information that I used to guide. The iteration that I had put together, um, was from all of those, going back through the meeting minutes and reading everything and looking at. The towns that they were reflecting, um, the only thing that, um, I think was different in mine is I was really spelling out. Channel lit letters, reverse channel lit letters versus channel lit letters versus internally illuminated, um, versus neon. Because when the, the iteration that exists currently, and also box signs, the, the sign box, they're not actually explicitly defined anywhere. Um, and that is not a common terminology for how those are phrased. Um, at least what's in the, the bylaw, um, anyway, so I, there needs to be some sort of consistency that was part of what I was trying to put together. Um, and looking at it, because it seems like a lot of the concern is what is appropriate for historic signage, what is appropriate for the pedestrian level. Um, and having worked in historic preservation and dealt with signage overlays and writing them before. Um, that was kind of just where I had pulled that knowledge, um, but there was previously a group that had been, where, a, a number of people, wasn't just one person. There were a number of people that were working on this update, um, but yeah, it, they got part of the way through it and then it just. I, I don't know exactly, I, because I don't have the institutional knowledge, I haven't been here that long, but for, something happened, I don't know, um, but they stopped working on it. And there were no more meeting minutes.
So apparently there is. Institutional knowledge among Z B A that they were going to share with Chair Lieber and Attorney Bobrowski after that. Joint meeting, so I, I anticipate after Monday knowing more on that front.
Uh, any other items not anticipated by the chair? And then the only other thing, and, um, thank you, Susan, for bringing it to my attention, but, um. Tuesday, April twenty second, um, we'll, we will not have a meeting because it's the town, town conflicts with the town election. So I think Susan, uh, your suggestion to put that at the bottom of our notes, just to, so the public can be aware would be, uh. Would be prudent. Um, so, any other items, uh, not anticipated? In hearing silence, in that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Uh, moved by Kevin, seconded by Bill, Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes to myself, so motion to adjourn passes, thank you guys for the time and, uh, we'll talk later.